Good.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order of the Bath Township Planning Commission. It's October the 24th, and it's actually about three or four minutes after six.
Six oh two.
Six oh two, is it? Okay, thank you, Miles. I'd like to add an item to the agenda if everybody would concur to have a brief discussion about the parcels that the township board asked us to evaluate about a year and a half ago that concern the properties that the township owns in the township. A lot of it's parkland, some of it are other parcels. But if nobody objects, I'd like to have that brief discussion tonight.
Add that to the new business, item number eight, A?
Yes. Is there any objections?
No.
No objections.
Hearing none, we'll add that to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with added business eight A properties.
Thank you, George.
Second?
Can I get a, oh, second? Thank you, Ray. Anyone object to that? Hearing none?
I.
We'll assume it's passed. You object?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you, George. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Anybody got a conflict of interest on the subjects we're gonna talk about tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment? There's no public here tonight. Minutes of the October 10th meeting. Anybody find any errors or omissions?
I didn't look over that good, so.
Move to approve the minutes, says, as drafted.
Mr. Baker and then Mr. Cockey.
Motion from Ray Cockey to approve the minutes. Can I get a second?
I can't. I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here. Gotcha.
I'll second it.
Thank you, George. I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October the 10th. Anyone object? Hearing none, let's move on to the comments about house bills. Yeah, this one's a dicey one, isn't it?
Yeah, you clarify.
No, go for it.
So, I included in the commission's packet a couple communications from, just short articles that came up. There has been a better, more lengthy article now put out by the Michigan Township Association, which I emailed out to the commission and blind copied everyone on. Basically, the latest that I've heard is that it has moved out of committee, which is farther than some of the other preemption measures have gone in the past. The most recent one was the mining and gravel one. That never made it out of committee. This one's now out of committee and expected to move to the State House floor this week sometime. So, it's kind of a desperate time if you feel that this is in the interest of local municipalities. This is the time to contact your rep. So, what they're seeking to do here is preempt local control, so including zoning of utilities, scale, wind, energy, solar energy, land uses.
Go ahead, George.
So, can we write another letter as, because we already wrote one, right?
We could write another letter if that's something that you feel.
Would that help, you think?
Yeah, I think this is.
Be better than doing nothing, probably.
I think this is the time to get the voice out there.
And I think our committee agreed unanimously the last time.
Yes, they did.
So, I don't see why that would be a problem this time.
Yeah, if you guys are fine with us immediately drafting up another letter and just getting it immediately sent out, we can do that.
Please, yeah. Do you need a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
No.
The concern I've got is if you look at who's really backing this thing, they don't have a dog in the hunt, and they never will have.
Who's really backing us?
A lot of people from the municipality areas, Detroit, Grand Rapids.
The metro Detroit area, the metro Grand Rapids area. The representative from the Warren area has been particularly vocal.
Yep.
You'd think they're the ones that would wanna have more control.
Well, they don't care because this won't go in their communities.
They ain't gonna put windmills there. You're not gonna put a solar farm there. There's not vacant land or wind.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering why they are trying to stir up anti-
I, well, I think there's two things in effect.
Anti-positively.
From the people I've talked to, and one is that they would like to have more power in Lansing over what happens statewide. Because the lobbyists are big contributors to the state elected officials, and it gives them a little more power to regulate things, so hopefully they can get more lobby revenue.
Philosophically, let's look at that. Why there has been a great deal of negativity towards major utility-grade solar and wind farm installations in Michigan as of late, in the rural communities?
Yes, that's, well, that's true nationwide.
Well, and so I guess philosophically, I would say the reason that this being a majority Democratic House in Lansing now, they're pro-alternative energy, you know?
In general, I would agree.
As a philosophy, I believe.
Yes, yes.
And so maybe that's why. I'm just.
Well, I think that's some of it, yeah.
Yeah, because they want to, you know, further Michigan's investment, if you will, in alternative energy sources.
So, some of the, just to speak on that, some of the concern, because I think that's true. Some of the concern though, like why local municipalities are getting so up in arms about this, isn't just from the zoning side, because obviously this would preempt zoning, but also preempts, kinda key word there is local control.
Yeah.
So, like with the wind energy, one of the main things that municipalities like to do is they like to set aside a large escrow account or some, they like the company to bond into the municipality. So, when they're delivering those large solar, or wind blades, and those trucks make those weird turns on kinda these backstreets.
I've watched them.
Yeah, and they're really, they're dragging the, I mean, they're messing up the road, basically.
Big town.
Right now, the municipality is able to take in money to repair after this is all said and done. This would preempt all that.
Interesting.
Not, not just the zoning, but it would preempt all control.
Right.
So, that's why people, people are worried about getting left holding a bag.
Well, I can't envision that being, being the case, just because that's just not the way, I mean, that would be just foolhardy.
There's little to no safeguards in these plans, in these bills.
Well, there's, there's no, we require a bond in case they wanna tear it down to recover the cost to remove it, and if they don't do it.
You know, somewhere.
Nothing in this bill that provides for that.
I was somewhere up my Ithaca, and I had always thought that unilaterally in Michigan, you, you had to have like a quarter of a mile on, a minimum on, on all four sides of those, those big wind generators. That was what I'd always read, you know?
Yeah.
You know, characteristically, they're a quarter of a mile off the road.
Right.
And I was up there, I was buying a boat somewhere back in the boonies, and I turned this corner, and they were putting one of those 200-foot tall ones, and I bet you it wasn't from here to that door away from the road, the, the-
Yeah, the base?
Stock of it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I went, that doesn't seem right.
Another, another thing too, just from communities that are into this, these coming into their communities, and the farmers that are pro-this energy source, right now, there are some farmers that reach out to municipalities to try to get these, because it can be a good profit revenue generator for the farm itself. You get a couple of these on your land.
Without question.
You're having some money come in. It helps you in the off-growth season or whatever. This would also disincentivize, utility companies would no longer have to, you know?
Oh, they wouldn't have to, exactly.
Yeah, they would just say eminent domain, we're putting it right here.
Yep, correct.
So, that's in our, I guess, in our downside.
I read several articles that said that they were leaning towards approving this bill.
I haven't heard that, but yeah, that is.
On two different occasions. I'll send you that article.
The speed at which they're moving indicates that there's some pressure behind this.
Yep, there's a lot of lobbying money behind it. I've been told that.
Well, you know, prima facie, I don't see any negatives other than the nostalgia of having barren farmland. You know, there are so many small farmers that are looking for a way out because they can't make any money. And, you know, you can't make any money anymore unless you're a mega farmer. That's why those giant farms have become so prevalent, is because-
That's right, right.
The little ones are selling out because they can't make it anymore. It used to be, you know, they were doing it just for self-sustainability and, and, you know, sell a little on the side, but.
Now, you have a, part go bad on the faler, and it costs you more, yeah, costs you more than your crop.
Hundred grand, you know?
Yep.
So.
Well, and, and this doesn't provide for combined use of the property either. You see, a lot of people are trying to graze under, around these solar panels, because if you raise them up high enough, which you can do, it's heavily costier, but then you can graze under them.
Well, you see what they're doing out west.
Right.
They're actually renting goats to mow out underneath them.
Yep.
And it's a win-win, you know?
Yep, it is.
Because goats eat anything.
Right, and if you let that brush grow up, eventually it's gonna shade the panels.
Yeah, and while it has to be routinely maintained, you know, and mowed, and it's a bare mow underneath those things.
Yes, it is very costly.
Yep, so you gotta have a natural symbiosis there. It'd be great.
Right, but this doesn't provide for that.
Well, it doesn't prohibit it either.
Well, no, but I don't know. I don't know what their endgame plan is.
Well, I guess, you know, if I owned a company that owned solar farms, and I could pay $5,000 a month to have it mowed or $750 a month to have goats go in there, I'd, I'd do the cheaper one and make more money, you know?
Yeah, I don't.
They're all looking for the money, so.
Seems like it.
I don't know. What do you think, Miles?
No comments. I think that these are, I think that these are bad bills. I think.
Oh, without question.
Well, they're nibbling away at local control on a lot of fronts.
Preserve local control, not away from the zoning front, but from the regulatory front.
I agree.
I think that.
I wholeheartedly agree with, with putting this down.
Greener energy, I don't see any problem with that.
No, I don't.
Do it the right way.
Right.
That's what local control allows. It allows to do it the right way, and it allows farmers to get bought in or buy into it.
Well, and what's interesting is, I would bet that if you attend, I didn't wanna attend that meeting. Dwight told me about that meeting they had at Clinton County.
Paul.
He said there were probably 70 anti-solar people there to like five pro. He said it really got ugly. But anyway, I'll bet you 90% of the people that protest at those meetings are not farmers.
I suspected a lot of them weren't even from the area, quite honestly.
I would bet you, yep.
Yeah, they really didn't have a dog in the hunt.
They're basically lobbyists, you know?
Right.
Free, freelance lobbyists.
Yep.
I think if you're a farmer, and it's your land, and you can do it.
Do what you want.
Helps you subsidize whatever uses you got going on, maybe you can talk to the company about raising up, get some goats under there. I think that's all good.
Yeah.
But you gotta be able to locally control.
Yeah, but you gotta be a little local control.
Local control is correct, yeah.
You think that farmer wants this bill to go through, and they want eminent domain to come in and tell them that they're getting a 100-acre solar farm? Probably not.
Yeah, and, you know, I guess the smartest thing to do would go to one of those established solar farms or wind farms and ask those individuals that have had that put on their land, you know? What do they think? What, what are the benefits? What did you benefit? What did you, you know, what are the detractments?
The biggest thing is just losing control, being able to recoup and recover and re-repair.
Well, I know, I went to a couple of meetings up in Alma when they first started putting those up there, and there were a number of people that complained about the flicker.
Yeah, and that, to me, that's.
I don't know how you can mitigate some of that. Maybe you can.
Well, you just put them out there far enough away from structures, but that's, you know.
But I mean, you can complain about most anything, I guess, if you wanna find something to complain about.
That's what we found at previous public hearings.
Yeah, you know, you can complain about your neighbor's yard lights.
Yep, and rightfully so in some instances.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Isn't that right? No comment over there?
We get, yeah, we get a lot of points about lighting.
Well, anyhow, let's, let's send out another letter.
Okay.
Send it to as many of the representatives as you feel would represent us in our area.
Okay, will do.
Senators and House, okay?
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you, Miles. All right, let's move on to the sidewalk ordinance again.
Do we have to?
No, we don't have to.
I know, I know you guys have seen these ordinance as a number of times. They're really coming along, though. The only real comments I have, as I've read through both of these ordinance, is then in their entirety today. I, there's a couple little formatting changes and a couple little grammar things want changed, but in terms of substance, I feel like the sidewalk ordinance is basically there. Did anybody have any more edits or comments for us with the sidewalk ordinance? We just gotta clean up a couple grammar things and a little bit of formatting, and next meeting we'll be seeking action on this ordinance.
At the trustee meeting or this?
At the, at the next planning commission meeting. We'll be looking for a vote. That will be because of how the calendar works out, the 14th of next month.
When is Karen coming back?
I believe she'll be back on the Monday after the 27th.
Well, basically, the first meeting in November should be that, right?
Yeah, I mean, she'll be back by then.
And, and if you would, Miles, sorry, John, if you don't mind, Miles, when she gets back, if you would, when we start talking and working in earnest on those parcels, you know, buy, buy and sell suggestions, possibly she could attend, you know, to, to input.
Yeah, it'd be great.
She's the nerve center, so we should have her in here, if she could get to one.
If she can make it happen. I mean, she's coming back with three weeks of vacation, but I can ask.
That's what I'm saying, you know? She'll have a, she'll have her, her tan lines and everything, so.
She honestly has been on Zoom call, I can say.
I know.
Been on Zoom calls with us almost every day.
Well, she said she was gonna be, she said she was gonna be working on that grant, you know, all the time she was gone, too.
Yeah, I mean, she, I really think she needs to relax, but that's me.
She should.
Okay, so, no, any more comments or edits on the sidewalk ordinance?
I have a couple days I can get to you, if I email you, if I find anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought you had found something.
No. Everything I've seen is corrected this time, but I didn't go through it yet.
Okay.
You know, I've got a, I don't know, this language bothers me a little bit, Miles.
Okay.
I'm on page four of 10.
Okay.
Where it says, "Snow removal."
Yep.
And it says, "No person shall place snow or ice upon the street right away so as to impair vehicle or pedestrian, non-motorized traffic."
Yeah.
Well, is, what if the sidewalk's not in the street right away? Because some of our sidewalks are not in the street right away. And if it is in the street right away, and the road commission plows the snow into the sidewalk, are they a person?
Oh, that's a good point. We should say no person or entity. But, yeah, the road commission is not a person, but we should say entity there, and then the road commission would be in violation of our ordinance.
Well, if you put that in there, yes.
Yeah.
So, if the homeowner clears the sidewalk, and then the, the county plows the snow into the sidewalk, the county would then become liable to remove the snow.
Agreed.
I don't know that that's gonna go over very well at all.
It'll go over as well as all, but they shouldn't be plowing into our sidewalks.
What if you don't have a sidewalk?
Doesn't apply.
Then it's not gonna apply. But you realize how many areas are gonna be.
It's not, it's not fair that they plow into the sidewalk, because then the landowner has to come by with their snow plow.
Right.
When I was a city councilman, and that was my number one complaint about snow removal, they would go out and do their sidewalks, and the city would come and put the snow right back. And my only response was, "And it's your responsibility to clear it."
Yeah, we'll probably, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to the road commission, John, and be like, if we run into this issue, well, what, what do you think, Mark? Like, I'll ask Mark Trotter. Yeah.
Well, you're gonna run into the issue.
We're gonna run into it. No, I agree. So, I'll talk to the county and see what they think, but I, in the meantime, John, we should definitely add "or entity" in there, because not only, the road commission's not the only entity plowing snow. I mean, all the apartment complexes are plowed, so.
Problem is that I shovel out mine in front of my house. I just have parallel parking in front of the house.
I know you do, yeah.
And I'll shovel it out, you know, and then the road commission will come by.
Yeah, so, well, in your case, the road commission's playing in your favor.
Really?
Well, you're saying you plow into the road, and then they come by?
No, no, I just clear it out, and it's like, a maximum of from here to him, from the road to my house.
So, it's got nowhere to go but back into driveway, okay.
I mean, I've had him break a window in my house.
I'll talk, it's a good point, John. I'll talk to Mark about it.
Like I said, my number one complaint, I almost wanted to turn my phone off every morning after snow.
Well, how'd you deal with it?
We would talk to them that, guys, when you're coming to the driveways, you know, put the damn blade down.
Yeah, you can't do that.
And it's too much work.
Yeah.
And we would, as a city councilman, I'd have to sit there and say, you need to go back out and clear it.
You'd triple your, triple your man-hours if you had to stop at every driveway, you know?
Well, we had blades that they dropped down as they came to a driveway, so that they could push it to the other side.
Yeah.
Oh, like a side blade to catch it.
Catch it. But it was just pure hell.
Well, with snow removal, and we knew going into this ordinance that snow removal would be one of those sticky spots.
Yeah, we sure do. Yeah, because it's gonna be a real issue down here along what I call Main Street.
No, I agree. Okay, so, good point, John. Good catch. We'll talk to the road commission.
We'll see. We'll see what happens, Miles. I don't know how good a catch it is.
It's one of those things too in planning, where I don't know, we've probably said this before, but you gotta plan for the 80%, not the 20%.
Right.
Because you can't plan for the 20%. Sometimes things just come up, and there, it's a hard situation to plan around.
Makes sense.
If you look at page 5B, and it starts out procedure when construction deemed necessary.
Yep.
And the last sentence says, "If the property owner pays over the five-year period, they shall be required to pay the full amount by the end of the fifth year."
Yeah.
I thought the intention was that they'd pay one-fifth each year. Is the intention that they can sit on it and wait until the fifth year and then pay it off?
They could do that if they wanted to.
Because they're getting a free loan, basically.
I mean, that's, yeah, they are getting a free loan. They could do that, though, so they determine what the, we haven't said, and we could do this if we wanted to. Do you want it to be equal installments over a five-year period? We're kinda leaving it up to the homeowner.
Previous sentence, "Construction assessments may be paid back over the five-year period."
Yep, but we're not saying in equal installments over the five-year period.
Right.
So, we're leaving up to homeowner to determine, okay, I'm gonna start paying in year three, or I'm gonna wait and let them summit in year five.
Right.
We're letting them choose, but we're, that's why we had to have the caveat of it shall be paid in full by year five.
Right, I understand that, but I also have a problem with giving the guy that pays the full thing upfront in the first year, that he doesn't get any discount.
Yeah.
And then they're not paying anything, so.
Till the fifth year.
Yeah, so if something happens, then, then it ends up being on the tax roll, and the next buyer ends up paying for it, which is, you know.
Well, now, that's a good point, because you could delay it, and then the, the next buyer would be obligated to pay the assessment.
If there's any back taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then.
That is, that is something, that is a thing, but this is common in our municipalities.
I understand that, but, so technically, the assessment wouldn't be put on until either the fifth year or when they first paid it in full.
Do you wanna say in equal installments over a five-year period?
Well, I would be more comfortable with that, but I'm just one vote.
The reason for the five-year period, and we talked about this before, Mark Outnoff, you're here when we were having these conversations. This is language we got from Meridian, Grand Ledge, Mason, they all do this, and the reason why they do this is if the municipality has to come in and fix a section of sidewalk, and especially in a municipality like ours, where some of our sidewalk areas are also low-income areas, and we say, hey, we're fixing your sidewalk. You didn't get repaired during the 60-day period, so we're gonna do it. We're gonna assess the cost or taxes. And then they say, well, how much is that? And we say, that's gonna be $5,000. And then they say, I guess I'm losing my house.
Right.
So, what we've done is given it over a five-year period, so they can say, all right, now it's only $1,000 a year instead of five grand upfront. So, we feel like we have to do something like that in this area.
I don't disagree.
But I agree, John, that now, I am seeing something where somebody says, you know what? I'm gonna play this smart. I'm gonna put the whole thing in year five. I'm moving in three years.
Yep. But can we put an assessment on in year one? When the work is done, so if they try and sell it from their proceeds, it has to cover that assessment. The, not the new buyer isn't gonna pick it up.
No, because then your taxes wouldn't be paid in full for that current tax year. Then it goes to the county, then it goes to the, through the collection process.
About all that, because I have no idea how that works.
Yeah.
But I agree, John, that equal, we need to change the language to say equal installments over a five-year period.
People will support, I don't.
I mean, they still might not be able to do that either, you know, they might be out of work.
Here's my feeling, we're not, we as a township are not a financing organization. I think giving, giving residents a professional opportunity, we'll say, to budget over the term of five years. Who are we to say, you know, how they're going to do that? They may, in two years, have some kind of settlement coming, or they may, you know, have a major amount of money coming in that they need two years or three years even, you know? So, let them, you know, it's not our responsibility to budget their money, making sure that they pay a minimum. Or we could have a minimum payment, you know, that's, that's another alternative, but then you get into the financial end of it, so. I don't think it's a good idea for us to do it.
I would maybe recommend just, my opinion.
Give them, give them a five-year stay of execution, you know, and.
Right.
That's, I mean, I think that's latitude enough.
And that is how the language is written. I mean, we, we didn't write this, or come up with this idea. This is how it's written in those other communities.
If that's the position we're gonna take, then you gotta change the last section in section C that says, "Construction assessments may be paid back over a five-year period."
No, that's true. That kind of implies payments.
Well, I think it should be more clear than that.
It immediately goes on their assessment, the first year.
Yeah, that's true.
No, because if it goes on their tax assessment and they don't pay it in full, then they're gonna be in arrears on their property taxes.
So, what would it be? Then the assessor would have the responsibility of breaking it up over five years, or none at all, and at the end of five years.
I guess my assumption was it goes on their assessment right away. I, I'll talk, I'm just gonna talk to Beth about it. My assessment is.
She just walked by you, Mr.
Yeah, my, my assumption was it goes on their assessment in year one, but the full payment isn't due till year five, so the assessor does just kinda have to let it ride.
That's what I thought.
Well, you can't do that with a drain assessment.
Yeah, you can't do that with any assessment that I know of, because it has to be paid in full if you put it on your assessment, I mean, on your taxes for that year.
Right.
Okay, I'll talk to Beth.
I mean, because I have a special assessment living on the lake for that water control structure, and so we have to pay that, you know?
Yeah, you have to pay it every year, though.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise you're in arrears, so you're gonna have the same clarification needed on that last sentence, I would think, too.
She's probably got some kind of verbiage to put in there for that, you know?
Yes.
Well, talk to Beth then.
Yeah. Another good catch?
Yeah, thank you. Did we address that issue that's on Marsh, or not, not Marsh Road? Park Lake Road on the west side, where you and I talked about that sidewalk that's built way up?
Yep, did, oh, did we, no, in this language, should we address it?
Because you were talking to township engineer about.
How do you want that addressed?
I don't know. I, I, didn't they have any language that they suggested? Because there's some places that should be a railing required, and there's some places that there should be either a retaining wall or some different slope or something.
Keep that soil in?
Yeah. I mean, there's, say, one section, that sidewalk's washed out right underneath it, or was.
Some type of verbiage that says, do, it's got, all sidewalks have to be set up to not lose soil?
I'm gonna talk about all, I'm gonna put a comment, I'm gonna put a number 13, I'm gonna put soil erosion, question mark.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just writing some notes here.
Did you include the standards for site plan approval, just so FYI?
No, cause we, not as FYI, cause we added, I'll go to it. That last sentence, just so the developers, because the developers might not look at this regulatory ordinance when they're going to create a site plan. So we wanted to say.
Yep.
The part about the five-foot right of way.
Right, okay, yeah, I remember that discussion. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, well, that's.
That's well covered then.
Yeah, no, those were all good points, um, that's type of feedback we're looking for. It's nice to talk about grammar, but we wanna make sure that this ordinance actually works.
Yeah, well, that's true. And we wanna make sure that it's forced equitably.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any like, good comments?
No.
None? You wanna move on to the subdivision, uh, private roads?
Drive, private roads and drives?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, if I can say a couple of things, so we did have a comment here on page one. And the highlighted green from the road commission, so I'm glad they pointed this out. Uh, they actually said this whole section about public streets, they're like, why are you guys talking about public streets? We do public streets. And so that was kinda, I was like, oh, that's really obvious, and maybe we shouldn't be talking, they're like, your standards are unenforceable. Cause we have our standards and there are streets. So I thought that was probably maybe something legacy that was in the township for a long time. Maybe at one point we were creating road standards and, I don't know. But Mark's like, yeah, you should just remove that. Mark Trotter.
Yeah, got, gotcha.
So I think that's probably good. If we do remove that though, I do have a note here that some of these definitions, we'll probably grab and throw those with our definitions. Cause they are used throughout the ordinance, and so we still need those.
Yeah.
So that was kind of a big change to the road ordinance. Another thing I said, uh, just before the meeting, uh, we were chatting with a couple of members, and if you didn't hear it. So there's this section here in the highlighted blue that I'm waiting on, uh, legal counsel. To provide us with some template agreements for maintenance and access, and then just a, a whole review of ordinance from them. To make sure we're not doing anything, and that, that highlighted blue is on page five B. Um. I e, they've had it for about a month and a half now. I emailed them. Probably late, not last week, but like Friday, the week before, and then last week again. And just asking them, hey, what's going on, guys? It's been about a month and a half, like, we need some edits here. I was hoping to be. I was hoping to get their edits by now and already have them included in this packet, so. If I don't hear anything by like midday tomorrow, I'll probably send another email and say, just start emailing them weekly, so.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know, I can't really rush the lawyers, I need their input.
No.
That's where that's at.
Well, I don't think there's any pressing need for this to be moved along rapidly anyhow.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think it is coming along. I mean, we've gotten input now, we still gotta have the drain commission comments to the table. But we've gotten input from the road commission, we've gotten input from the drain commission, the township engineer. Um, it's, the ordinance itself is getting pretty built out, I mean, obviously it's a eight-page long ordinance, which is long. Um, but it's roads and it's complicated. I mean, we removed that public streets stuff and we'll save ourselves about a page and a half there, so we'll do it back down.
Right, yes, that would be a good idea.
But it's understandable, so.
Yeah.
From a language point of view like.
Yeah, I, I don't even know that this is, it's getting, I don't know, going this direction myself.
Yeah, so what's kinda hard about this ordinance, um, is it, it is a big-time, uh, commitment. For something that there has been, I guess I would say like a political football a little bit. Um, we, from the planning department's view though, we have to do it, cause it was a text amendment that was submitted to the township, so we will make its way to the board.
Yep. I didn't see a lot of support from the public for it at all, although I thought we'd see some developers or some real estate people.
Yeah, during the public hearing, yeah, you'd think, cause we definitely had those phone calls from them over the years.
Right, right, but, but the only person that really was interested in this was Mr. Kessler.
Yeah, the one that applied, yeah.
Yeah.
This, the struggle for me is the public, communicating to the public to get them to talk, to show up for meetings. Cause it used to be, you know, you had the Bath to Whit review, and that went to the local community. A lot of people would see that in the Bath to Whit review. But now that most, a lot of people are frustrated with, uh, journal and them to pay online, you know, some of the older people. And they've stopped getting their subscriptions.
Well, the Bath to Whit review isn't in business anymore, and so now they only do the Lansing State Journal.
Now that's gone, and so.
There was a Clinton paper that's on too.
Yeah, those two entities are gone, so how do you reach out to every home in the, without putting a flyer out?
How do you legally reach out, you know, that's required by law?
Right, it is.
And then the State Journal is the only.
And even if you legally reach out, they're not, like, I know many, many people that don't, they're, they're like, ask what's going on, and it's because they don't. And I'm like, we have to go to the website and, you know, look on the Bath, Bath Township website. You know, and that's just not their thing.
Well, all we can do is put the information out there, you know, and hope they see it.
Right, I agree.
We can't hold their hand and say, okay, you have to look at this.
I guess my comment was looking for other ideas or, uh, you know, if somebody has, uh, ways for me to communicate to the other people in the community that I talk to.
Yeah.
To get them to, to find it out. Cause they, they see it, and it's like the, the Norm facility.
Yeah.
Was in the Lansing State Journal, you know, then they, then they see it.
Yeah.
You know, and then they start asking all these questions. I'm like, well, there's already been a public meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we just found out about it.
Yeah, well.
Do we post at the senior center?
We, so we, there's a information board at the senior center, and we have our information board out here. And then, um, we post to the Lansing State Journal with the Norm Fasteners one. Everyone within three hundred feet receives a letter on the mail as well.
Yeah.
But like, it, it's just hard to get people to pop.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, in general, and that's a planning issue that's always been an issue, and it's always gonna be. Like the meeting we're hosting tomorrow on the twenty-fifth, we've driven around and passed out flyers. And we put it in the Friday Report, we put it on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
We put it on the website, we put it in the paper, I mean, we're doing it all, and if I can get fifteen people to show up, I'll be absolutely stoked.
I will tell you, I have had twenty-five hundred hits on the flyer that I put on our Facebook page.
Great.
Good.
Yeah, individual, uh, hits, you know?
That's good.
And I also put it on the Bath Community, uh, website.
Great.
Or Bath Community.
Facebook.
Yeah.
My wife gets a blog on Bath, Bath Township.
You don't see blogs so much anymore unless you go to them, but, yeah, they were a thing for a while, you know, like MySpace, and then they went away.
Well, Taylor's got her Friday Report, and she put it on that as well, and I mean, people in the know in the community do read that. I mean, it's a good, the Friday Report is a nice thing, cause it kinda sums up what happened the week.
That's funny, I was, yesterday I was out in front of my house, right on Park Lake Road, unloaded my truck, and this young woman came by trying to get. To the park, I assumed she was going to the park, and she's got a carriage, a baby carriage with her little baby in it, you know, and I said. And I was shutting the door and I had to get back so she could go around, you know, cause cars are coming and going. And, uh, I said, hopefully someday we'll have a sidewalk here for you, and she goes, that would be great. And I said, we are having a meeting, incidentally, this coming Wednesday, at, this was yesterday, I told her. I said at, at the township hall about non-motorized plan for the next five years, and I said, you're welcome to come, and she said, you know? She said, I think I'm on an email list that I got on Friday that said something about that, and I said, oh, you must be on the Friday Report, and she goes, I think I am.
Yeah, and we pass it out to all the apartment complexes and, uh, but that, I mean, that's significant amount of staff time that we took.
Well, yeah.
We don't, we can't do that every time we have a public hearing come up. And then the sticky part is like with the Norm Fastener thing, now that's obviously to a larger scale, so you might think that. Oh, maybe we should go out and do that for this public hearing. The problem there is.
You set a precedent.
Yeah, legally, now we're treating them differently.
Yep, and you can't do that.
Can't do that.
You do what's required by law, and that's posting it in.
Right, yeah.
Community newspaper.
I apologize for the rabbit trail, but thank you.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's, I think, personally, I think that's something we need to talk about, at least be in, be in concert with.
Thank you.
But yeah, I mean, back to this ordinance, I, it's getting there, it's, it's quite lengthy, um. I agree that it's controversial, and I also don't know how this is gonna go over at the board, I couldn't call it.
I don't even know how it's gonna go over to the planning commission, quite honestly.
That's here.
That's for gathering aside.
Well, I understand that, but it has a lot of ramifications for development that's not environmentally friendly.
Yeah, we've talked about in, in the past, and maybe, I, I didn't get good sense of how the board felt. But you talked about excluding the rural district from allowing private drives?
Yeah.
Well, I think certain zoning classifications may be, certain land use classifications, whatever you wanna call them.
Would, would the planning commission like to see that?
Well, at one time we talked about what parcels could be affected by this.
I think.
But that's a lot of work to determine that.
Yeah.
It's almost undeterminable, too.
I don't know what's gonna happen. Um, possibly, maybe an illustration, Miles, something that would say, you know, cause there's, what is it, there's four? And then a maximum of twelve or something like that.
Minimum of three, a max of twelve, but that's what's hard is depending on, that's what, like John was saying, you know, it'd be. It'd be a lot of work, and we could do the work, I mean, we, we've done it in the past where we do GIS analysis, and we say, these are all the properties in the township above five acres.
Well, that wouldn't be necessary, but I'm just saying, what would constitute an exemplification of this. Quote, private drive ordinance or private road ordinance, this is an illustrative example. A lot of people, you know, a picture says.
Oh, yeah, we could say what it would look like.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Okay, we could do that. I was saying, analysis of what properties would be affected in the township, it's almost impossible.
Oh, yeah, that's.
No, if you had a picture, then, then they can extrapolate that information themselves and plug it into.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Well, that's true, yeah.
That's, that's what I was.
I'll, I'll put up, we'll try to draw up some renderings.
Well, what do you think about that, Miles?
I think that's good, I think pictures help.
Okay.
Draw up renderings.
Well, I think if you're gonna do that, then we should have like three and five and twelve or something.
You know, show what the different examples.
Yeah, just, you know, just, and you might be able to pull that off somebody else's site, Miles.
You might.
That could very well be in the.
Well, you're gonna have, depending on the area, you're gonna have a minimum parcel size.
True, and we could, you know, plug that in.
Right.
I'm just talking about the renderings, um.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of it has their shared domain for those, a lot of those illustrative examples.
What about my question of the, do you wanna exclude the rural, does the planning commission wanna exclude the rural district?
I think if this has got any chance of getting by the board, you're gonna have to.
Okay.
Personally.
I was put that in there. What do you think about that, Miles?
I think that sustainable development and sprawl are a thing, and I think that's a way to, uh.
Mitigate?
Mitigate sprawl.
Okay, I, you know, I, I hope you don't mind me asking him his opinion, because he's personally, in my opinion, he's the professional here. He knows what the hell he's talking about.
And he talks to a lot of other planners.
Yes, he does.
Some of us more than others, but, yeah.
And both of those, those men sitting over there have seen that up on the big board at school, so.
Yeah.
They could school us at a lot of times.
Yep.
No, it's all good, but yeah.
It probably gets discussed at school, too.
Yeah, it does, sprawl, I mean, sprawl is the enemy of planning, so. I think that the rural areas are vulnerable for it, and I think that if you exclude them from this, then it would mitigate sprawl.
I think it would help, yeah. But then, you know, where do you find the rural area anymore?
Yeah, well, that was the big question, here's, what is quote for rural area?
And that's, right, correct, I mean, subjective, but for us, it's gonna be the rural district.
Yep. And you have that delineated on the chart anyway.
On our zoning map, yeah.
Maybe you've got some area that I think should be rural, that's really zoned, uh, single-family residential.
Well, there are some areas, I mean, and this is not a rabbit hole, but when we do the next comprehensive plan, I think there needs to be a hard conversation about. The current zoning map and the future zoning map, cause I think there is areas that are zoned developmental, that are should be zoned residential. And I think there's areas that are residential that should be zoned developmental. So I think that the map is kinda weird, how it's been laid out.
Well, one, one of the things that really bothers me is that there's places on that map that are zoned for. Re- a residential or even development that are not served by utilities.
I agree, that's odd.
And that's real odd, I think, I, whoever drew those utility boundaries, I don't know what they were thinking.
I think that there was an effort and during Jim Folds' time to. At, and he did a good job, and this is, he was ahead of his time when he rewrote Bass ordinance, but. There was this movement in the nineties to make ordinances like very complicated, like only planners would ever be able to understand these documents.
So was, yeah.
And then they've, the mindset had changed in the two thousands to really like, instead of having twenty-five zoning districts. Create like five to ten zoning districts, and so it's simplified, so Jim Folds had his time, he simplified our district. But I think we've oversimplified the map itself. I'm, I think having five or six districts is great, and I think that it's great for Bath, it makes it easy to understand.
Yes.
How the districts are laid out, though, I think they tried to lay it out too uniformly across township. Where you gotta zoom in more and say, does it even make sense that this street is high-density development? It's got no utilities, and it's all a single-family home zone.
Right, right, correct.
It's logical.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Right, and it's not served by a Class A road either.
Yeah, and so in my mind, yeah, and so, but unfortunately, because that's the map that we have on hand. When we have developers talk to us about these different things, we're like, yeah, these are the areas, and they, and they're looking at it, and they're like, no, this isn't the area.
That's probably something we should work on sooner than later.
Well, it's gotta be, it has to be done as a part of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll start in twenty, twenty-four, late twenty-four, we'll have conversations about it. We'll start mapping in twenty-five for adoption in twenty-six.
Okay.
Which it'll come up sooner than you think.
Oh, yes, it will. Yep, definitely will.
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, I think, is.
The new item?
New item, yeah. Ray, you wanna introduce us on that?
Certainly.
You and I've talked about this quite a bit.
Um. This is about, uh, our being tasked with, uh, looking over the township-owned properties to determine. To make suggestions as to whether they would be a good candidate for buying or selling, uh, excuse me, for selling or retaining. Um, and I, I looked at, you know, Miles, you and I have looked at it, you know, a lot, and it appears that, uh, there's gotta be. At least three-quarters of the township-owned parcels are in and around Park Lake. Um, and a lot of them, you know, um, need to be resurveyed anyway. Because there, uh, some old subdivisions that are, you know, lots that could be combined easily. Especially if we were going to sell them, and I don't know what that process is exactly, I know you have to have them surveyed and re, uh. Rewritten in regards to their.
Boundaries and stuff.
Yeah.
Cause some of them are meets and bounds and some.
One in particular, if, if you could put fetch up there, we could look at it, Miles. Um, that's something I thought, you know, just prima facie, I, I saw it, and I went, wow, that'd be a great parcel for somebody to put a house on. Um, cause it's, and it's right there, do you, do you know where Lindberg Drive and Webster Road are, Miles? Just south, the, the next intersection south of Park Lake Road, behind the church. Right there. Okay, go, no, the other way, go west, there you go. And, uh, then go down Webster Road, right there.
Yep.
See that parcel right there?
This one?
That one.
Yep, that's a good point, and I've also talked, talked about this, if you click on this parcel.
Yeah, it opens up the whole thing.
It's this whole parcel, I think there might be a deep restriction.
Well, that, that, see, that's.
How we took in that property.
Yeah, exactly, and it was part of, it was part of the, um, uh, Poly Aqua Shores subdivision.
Now, these properties here.
Those are all Poly Aqua Shores.
And we own that one, but we own these one. I do not believe that restriction app- applies to those.
You don't, you do not believe what?
The, that restriction applies to these, these could.
They're all the same as that other one up there.
Well, so, um, I think these ones could become homes, I don't think this one could. Because of the restriction.
And what is the restriction?
On how the property was donated to the township, it was donated with the intent to never be developed.
Okay, I don't think that's part of that, but it may be.
Yeah.
Um, if that's the case, then, then it's, it's a contiguous piece of that to the left, yeah, that right there. That's a, that's almost a six-acre parcel that goes all the way down there, that encompasses.
Yep.
The trailhead area and parking.
You wanted to keep that as, and make that into a nice park or?
Yeah, exactly, but that first lot up there is, is separated by a private, a private property right there.
Right.
And so that's why I thought, well, gosh, that's, you know, it's never gonna be part of that, uh, perspective nature preserve, so. That would be an ideal double lot for somebody to build a nice house on.
If you, if you can do it.
If you, well, all you gotta do is ask Bath and C, you know, and I don't, I couldn't find any records on it, because what I'm trying to do is also compile. The worth of these for the purposes of of offsetting our, uh. I always wanna say co-pay for the purposes of a, of a grant. What is that called? Matching funds, that's what it is, and I have, I have been compiling a list, Miles, of the ones that I can get the, the historic. Sale price that the township purchased it for, a lot of them down there, we purchased from, you know, foreclosure, back taxes. Um, there is one right in the middle. Ironically, that is also owned by, it's up toward the top, by Stephanie Schenkel.
Yeah, I just saw.
Who also owns the other property right over adjacent to Wiswasser Park, and I have brought that up to Karen. In the past, and she said, yeah, we're working on that. Prima facie, that was.
Yeah, what my, what my understanding is of what, you know, and this is going back to Dan Kramer's time. Is what the planning commission was asking planning staff to come up with, and we never came up with anything great was. Some kind of objective rubric of this is, whenever the board, they have done this in the past, has asked. Hey, we're thinking about this property to either buy, sell, or retain, we want the planning commission's opinion. Dan wanted planning staff to come up with a rubric of what score this. Now, what we used ad hoc, the one time that, the last time mine was here, they asked us to do that, was the nine goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And if buying that property met those goals and objectives, and we s- uh, signed a score and a weight.
Nine of them? Could you maybe pare that down to five or something like that?
Well, there was nine goals and objectives, so we used all nine, and we said, does this mean goal one, yes, no, if yes, five points, if no, zero.
And that's something you and I talked about, I think that's a great idea, that's, I personally think that's the way to evaluate these, you know.
Well, I think we've gotta be aware of the ones we wanna research to see if there are deed restrictions on them.
Yeah, and that's something I've never heard of, Miles.
We wanna research every one of them for that reason, unless we feel they're a parcel that we wanna sell.
I have the original, the original, um, plot or plat, if you will, of that, uh, subdivision. Poly Aqua, and I wasn't aware of that, because I noticed that some of them in that same subdivision, we have purchased through foreclosure. Uh, from foreclosure, if I, if I could, and others like those right there, I'm not sure, certain of.
And John, maybe this is something, here's where I get cautious about too, cause, you know, I've always wanted to be able to stay in my lane too with. Planning and land use policy, so me and Ray were talking about this a little bit, um. My understanding, and we found all this research, we went to create that rubric of buying and selling property is. In the state of Michigan, buying and selling property and the authority to do so solely rests with the elected officials of the given municipality. Now, the board had asked us in the past to weigh in and do some recommendations, which is why we created the rubric. But if we're gonna go property by property and start doing some research and be spending staff time, I I need the board. To ask us to do that.
That was my impression that they already had, but.
So I don't, so I.
Well, they ask us to evaluate these properties to buy, hold, or sell.
Correct, and that's basically.
Well, I shouldn't say buy, to hold or sell.
Yeah, to hold or sell, yeah, not buy.
So we have, we, you recall, we have been asked that.
That was, yeah, that was actually.
Attention, when I talked to the trustees about it, yes, but I don't wanna spend a lot of time on something. That is inconsequential to us, so if it's a parcel that we just arbitrarily said, well, we should get rid of this, then. We better make sure that we can get rid of it, if it's something that we're just gonna say, well, let's hang on to it. Then I don't know that we care what the deed restrictions are.
Well, exactly, and and in that, Miles, if that is the case, with that one or any of the other ones of Poly Aqua. Then that would lend credence to even more so than to put them into the park, you know? Or the trail, or whatever you wanna call it, you know, and a lot of that now is underwater, down in the lower, lower left-hand corner of that.
Okay, well, it sounds like, Ray, you were gonna be our staff's point of contact on evaluating some of these. It'd obviously be something we bring back to the commission as.
And I just wanted you to have somebody, a point person, that, you know, you and I could, could talk back and forth, and if you need, you, just use me as a grunt.
Yeah, so is it reasonable, is it reasonable that we like, um, maybe next week, schedule a time to meet and just discuss some of this? I'll ask other staff if they are willing to join.
Feel free to assign me tasks if you need, if you need anything done. I'm adept at at fetch, so that's, you know.
So we'll do that, staff will help, and we'll bring it back to the commission.
I think we need to think outside the box and some of the usages of this too.
Well, and there's been interest from, and myself and other township employees about doing something with these parcels. To the point where we've reached out to the MEDC and HUD.
About low income housing.
Yeah, could we, could we do something, cause our goal here is, one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to diversify the township's housing stock. So we didn't wanna just get mansions across the street from the lake, we wanted to be able to build sustainable housing model here. So that's why we wanted to partner with an organization like HUD.
Well, that was another reason for that extra large lot up there, I, that I saw, I said, you know, that could be a. You could put a duplex or a triplex there, you know, you could put probably six apartments there.
What's the, what's the lot to the, up to north to, uh?
Above?
This one? Yeah, that one just sold, actually, there's a single family home, home being built there, but obviously, it's tight, I mean.
It's very tight.
To get the, to get the minimum square footage permitted in the township, they had to have a finished basement.
Is it a manufactured home or what?
It's a, it's gonna be stick built.
Oh, I was, I was gonna say, as you were saying that, I'm sorry, um, you said it's gonna have a finished basement, so it's probably gonna stick built, yeah? And it's more square than long and skinny like that.
Finished basement there, I bet it's wet though, ooh.
Yeah, they're gonna have to shore it up, I'm not exactly sure how they're gonna do that.
They're gonna have to have a sump pump.
Just make it higher than.
What's that?
Put the basement up high.
That'd be kind of a.
Lower than thirty feet, though.
Thirty-five.
Oh, thirty-five, yeah.
They could do that, though, some people only dig down into the ground like six, seven feet, and then the basement rises like four feet, and they just have some steps into the house. Helps with egress windows these days anyways is a requirement, so.
Yeah, I've done that, yeah.
Another alternative I thought about, um, Miles, was this Stephanie Schenkel trust, I, it's her daughters, I believe now that own the trust. But she has that property just south of where you're looking right now, that kind of interrupts the township contiguous. Contiguous properties, it's like right, one of those right there.
Yep, right there.
Yeah, right there, she has that one, she has one that's literally underwater, uh, adjacent to. It's just east of the town, of the, uh.
Beach?
No, 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 the, uh, well, yeah, you you know where that one, right where the tree is, she has that one right there. And then she also has one that's literally in the water by the, uh, community center. Go where the community center is and you'll see it, uh, right there, and just right there, you know right where these are, don't you? You've been fishing around in here, so, yeah, he knows where all the, what I thought of, you know. I mean, that certainly is of no value to her, uh, you know, to her trust, so maybe we could come up with something to trade. Karen was never, uh, you know, uh.
Yeah, municipalities, though, the problem, another problem is to, that I see with this, is like municipalities typically don't like to be in the land game. That's not our thing, you know?
I don't have any problem playing in the land.
Not at all, I mean, if it's, if it's in the interest of the community, you know.
Right, that's exactly what.
And if it's a par value, what's wrong with that?
Sure.
Yep, exactly.
I think that I would hope that we'd be building some kind of corridor improvement here in twenty-six, and I think we'll need space to do that, so.
And that right there would be, you know, another one of those feathers in our hats, you know, that little lot right there.
I think the township has done a good job acquiring property here, we have some property here, that's gonna help with our sidewalk improvements.
I just found out that Carolyn Paget, who is next to that property that we're trying to acquire. That, right, no, to the, to the other way, go the other way.
What other way?
Uh, across the street from there. And then go west.
West?
Down.
Down.
Carolyn, okay, that one right there. That's Carolyn Paget's, I had just heard that she wanted to acquire that property, that that the township just became interested in. And that property across, you know, on the lakefront there would be one that we would like to acquire, I would think, for the purposes of the walkway.
Well, yeah, it would be, and that's something where we have talked about even approaching them and doing a land division, I don't know if the land division would meet zoning, oh, that's a problem. You have to get, it's either all or none, but.
You think so?
Yeah, cause the Land Division Act, I don't think will less divide these, even though they're already basically divided by the road. Yeah, but they're functioning one parcel, and if to make this its own parcel and this its own parcel, you're moving away from conformity. Say, wanna be permitted.
Oh, I see, okay.
Our own rule is screw sometimes, so.
Well, what about eminent domain for a right of way?
I, I mean, that's always on the table, again, municipalities don't like to use that, uh, for obvious.
Yeah, cause that really puts a, puts you, gives you a black eye.
I think we might have the space there, just because the curvature of the road, if this is at all accurate.
It seemed that the right of way would be there. And some of those places, we're gonna have to put probably a wooden walkway, you know, or a boardwalk kind of thing, but it can be done, I think it'd be phenomenal for us to have that.
Yeah, I mean.
Sure be a lot safer these people.
Beautiful along there, yeah, where you could actually walk safely along there.
Just because we've got a rule doesn't mean you can't violate it, though.
Well, you can always get variance.
We like to go to the.
Just get a variance, that's what variances are for.
Exactly.
But, yeah, so.
I mean, it is divided by the road, so it's two separate parcels, no matter how you look at it, in my opinion.
One parcel.
One thing I'd like to see also is that from the beach west, all of the township property put together. Right out in front of where the old mobile home park is, we own all that too, right there, that's township property.
John, you, you were talk, you, me and Beth were talking in the hallway one day, so that is something that the township is working on. And Beth was talking to John about that, some of these properties, especially over here, where it's just a mess.
Yeah, Beth's already working on.
They've been working on that to make those one solid unit.
Right, Beth's working on that.
So, I, we agree, we know it's an issue, we're trying to clean it up.
And you, just by a, yeah, a nod of the head has, you know where that Stephanie Schenkel property is, where the tree is? If we acquired that, the next three parcels right there, and right there, and right there, are all M dot. And I actually contacted M dot about those parcels, just to get a read on it, and she said. If you're interested in an M dot parcel, you have to determine who owns the next parcel next to it. Because if, if it's privately owned, then we have to have an auction, and she said that is a five, six year project. She said, but if, if you own parcels on both sides, then it's a lot easier and we can just deed it to you. So that's something I think that, to make that park a little more contiguous and, and, you know.
So do we already own the one on the west?
We own this.
We own the one with the houses right there.
We don't own here, I don't think.
No, and Bright, or Ray's owns both of those there, not that one, that's M dot.
That's M dot probably.
So, anyway. We're just barking up a tree right now.
Okay, well, we'll do that, we'll schedule a meeting with you, uh, next week.
Sure, thanks, just give me a call or text, email, whatever.
At this point, I don't think we should spend a lot of staff time researching.
That's why I say, you know, whatever structure he needs, I'd be happy to do it and hand it over to him.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the report from the planner.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it quick and, um.
Oh, you got lots of time, well, it's only five after seven.
Yeah, I know, we have, our meetings have, the last three meetings have all gone pretty long, so. I know a couple people were happy about like, a lighter agenda, and we knew a couple people wouldn't be here, so I, again, it's good to keep it a little bit light, but. So development updates, um, there have been a couple updates, uh, I don't know if you guys noticed, but just because I know community members always asking you guys questions. I like to, uh, update you as I get updated.
George, you too?
So, uh, Big B Coffee is obviously open, um, Dunkin is obviously open. Berry's Bagels, they have a building permit submitted, and they have plans in the building department that have been reviewed and approved. But I'm seeing little activity inside Berry's Bagels itself. Yeah, I know, they put their sign, the thing is, they got ahead of their skis with putting those signs up, I don't know why they did that. So Dunkin, I mean, they put their signs up last thing, which is what most developers do, the signs are the last thing you go up. But, yeah, so a couple things are getting finished up, Ace Hardware, no indication on when they'd be open, if you hear anything, let me know. The Surgical Center, they were saying, uh, January, February, um. Their landscaping is coming along for both of those sites.
I noticed remodeling happening at the motel by the old, uh.
Yeah, there has been some trucks up, we don't know what's going on with that, uh, the property behind that motel, and there are developers have approached that motel. And have wanted to buy them, I'm sure their property values are. The market conditions are in their favor to sell that place off, I don't think, in my opinion, they have the ability to maintain that in the long run. So I won't see that going to sale, I think that'd be positive, cause I think that's a bl- in my opinion, a blighted property. Uh, we've had several enforcement actions there over the years, um, police and fire are there all the time, so it just is what it is, it's one of those things. Um, the property behind that is entertaining a sale, um, so we'll see. What could possibly happen there, that's kind of something just in the ether right now, though, so this is, now we're in the, now we're in the world of rumor, so. Just take that with a grain of salt, but the rumor is this property is entertaining a sale.
The one behind it?
Yeah, the one behind it.
Yeah, where the lake is, yeah.
Yeah, where that is, so.
And that's gonna be, you had mentioned it's gonna be some kind of a multi.
We don't know, I've seen, uh, we saw a plan for storage, that plan immediately went away when they figured out how much other storage is presently ongoing. I've seen a plan for some kind of like, uh, townhomes, condos, which, you know, that'd be a good housing type, I think, for there.
That's not served by sewer, is it?
I think it is.
I think it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
I don't remember putting a sewer down that road.
If the sewer's not coming up this road, it's right here.
Yeah, it's there, I know there's sewer there.
So, depending on how many units they're bringing in, and depending on the length here.
Well, they, they could extend it, it's not.
Yeah, they might, it might make economical sense where they would extend it. I think they, I do think they have a requirement to tap in, because technically, the parcel is within two hundred feet of the sewer, the sewer.
It is?
If you're with, yeah, cause this is, this is all parcel here, this, this is all part of it, so if you're within two hundred feet of the sewer, you gotta tie in.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, north, that parcel that you spoke of, you know who owns that?
This?
Gupta owns that.
Oh, yeah.
Same as the one that owned the, the house that we just tore down. And also where the Ace Hardware is now, he owned that as well.
Yeah, acquired a lot of land back in the day, so. So, yeah, and then we're waiting, I'm expecting sometime over this winter, because these are, lots are pretty much built out, I'm waiting for HDI to come in. And approach the planning commission about this parcel.
They haven't yet, I thought that was a done deal.
I was surprised they put a third house back on that cul-de-sac.
Here? Yeah, they, they had three lots.
Those are still empty?
They're built, they're built out now, they built all these out, and those were their last three, they're built out now, so. The winter's coming, they probably weren't, they're wrapping up their building cycle, but usually, winter is when they'll do this. The only reason this may be held up, and this is outside of my purview, is this all drains into these retention ponds. And then they retain the water until it ultimately makes its way into Lake Lansing. Through a, uh, underground drainage network here, so they're dealing with the Ingham County Drainage Department.
Commission, yeah.
And they have, yeah, a commission, and there has to be coordination between two different county drainage commissions. That can stall off this project right there, so, I, that could be, that's what I'm thinking might be the holdup.
Interesting.
Unless they build onsite retention.
East Lansing Storage, um, they are finished with their buildings now, it took them a hot second. They are controlling better for water now, I've been out there during a rainstorm and a rain event, and it's less stagnant water. They're, all those roofs are now capturing. They're, all those roofs are now capturing the water and direct feeding it into the French drain, so they have. A drain that goes into the ground, perforated pipe, sends it to the French drain, so.
Supposed to be in their paving last week and they didn't do it.
Yeah, I didn't see the new asphalt going. Yeah, and that might have just been because it's such a wet week, maybe, because I even know at my apartment complex, they were supposed to be doing asphalt last week and it got canceled. It's supposed to be happening this week now, so I don't know if it's just cause it was basically, it was like we were living in Seattle last week, it was just gloomy and drained.
It was pretty miserable, wasn't it? So that lot, that property that Hosford still retains uh adjacent to East Lansing Storage. Way back, when I talked to Hosford about that, he said he would sell the whole thing, but apparently he divided it up to sell just to East Lansing Storage, that one portion. So he's still retaining that right there, is there any, in the, anything in the works about them?
No, I think he's happy with the situation there, as far as I know.
Well, he wishes he hadn't sold it to him, I know that.
Oh, really, okay.
But I think he's happy to operate here.
I don't think so, no.
It's kind of unfortunate that Fetch GIS doesn't upgrade their satellite imagery.
You're telling me, man, so I feel you on that. What else is going on in the the development world, um these apartments, we've talked about before, they've stalled, they're waiting for better lending conditions, I say good luck. I mean, obviously, this project's under review, um.
Could you, could you uh put that building, like a square where that building would be by the two barns?
It's just, yeah, almo- you could almost see the the square where it would be.
Does go farther into the wood line than you would think, though.
Little bit farther back.
I just couldn't. It don't even have to be in the right place, it would just.
It's like about. Here, something like that.
Doesn't it go closer to them buildings?
Out closer to the barns there.
These buildings.
Go all the way out there?
It may, may, it may be something.
Something like, it's longer.
It did like that, but then once there are parking lots here, it's like that. That's where their parking.
I was thinking it went way.
No, it's not that close. The scale, I talked about that in the public meeting, the scale is all messed up in your mind because it's just such a big structure.
And um uh Dymaxian said that they wanted to buy that entire parcel, but as it is right now. Kessler only wanted to, was interest, only interested in the the actual footprint of that.
Yeah, he wants to play it close to the chest, for sure.
Start in our impact, in fact, they haven't closed the deal on the property at all.
Yeah, there's still a lot of looming questions out there with this project, I mean, there's. I'm trying to stay in my lane and look at it from the land use policy, but there's looming questions about taxes, land ownership, all, so many things. Yeah, infrastructure.
Yeah, I know, that's what Karen's been working on, but uh. You know, sooner or later, that's gonna be developed, so it's prudent.
Just depends on what's gonna be developed.
We get our ducks in a row on on that.
Do you want one great big facility or do you want a bunch of?
Well, that's, you know, if this one doesn't go through, then that's, you know, someday, that's what's gonna happen, that's ideal for it.
Well, and on that note, that kind of segues away, segues us into what I wanted to talk about with this parcel, so there has been change. Cause that's one thing too, like right now, Mr. Kessler is here, he is the one, he is the point person, um. But time has a way of doing something to all of us, which is die, um not to be crude. But then, it's always an unknown circumstance with li- land ownership, when somebody passes, what are the kids gonna do? And for the Kessler family, I've, I don't, I have no idea, I don't know.
I don't know either, no.
Um for the I family, I also didn't know and so I wanted to let you guys know that Sam Ied is now our point person for this parcel. And he has entertained bringing back a form of what's been there before, but modified, so. That's the rumor right now, I haven't seen any application come in, so we'll see.
Did you speak with him?
I have spoken with him.
Yeah, he's good to work with.
So, property changes hands, kids come on board and then it's kind of a whole new ballgame, so maybe you'd be looking out for something like this over the winter. So the two I would expect to come to us over the winter would be this one and the HDI one. So I guess just heads up, okay, and that's what I've got for development, if you don't care if I.
No, that's fine.
Go to uh planning department updates, um I just wanted to let you guys know that we are still in a format of. Increasing our record retention, uh we haven't talked about that in a while with you guys, but it's something that's ever going for us. Uh we've backlogged a number of PZEs, those are planning, zoning and engineering, so those are SUPs from like the two thousands and the nineties. That are all um.
Hard copy?
All hard copies and we're digitizing them, so that helps us stay in line with Michigan's Record Retention Act. And it just helps when people have questions about what's going on on their property twenty years ago.
Who scans those physically?
We do.
Serious, when you just get time, you say.
Whenever we got a spare second.
Did you get a large format scanner?
We ha- yeah, we have a plotter scan, we got a new, we, yeah, cause I was talking to him about how much our one suck, we do have a new one now.
I actually bid on one and I went, wow, probably shouldn't buy this, cause Miles probably already got one.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got one and then we all have small scanners on our desk, uh their desk, actually.
So, is there a a central server that you you put them in?
Uh yeah, we have our server, uh obviously in-house here, that server is backed up and then the re- one of the main reasons we use BSNA. We use PZE within BSNA. Is not only does it go to our server in-house, but it goes to their server, which is on the cloud.
Oh, okay, so I was just gonna say, who, who has the, the the capacity to hold all this stuff on the cloud, because I think that's the most important.
And it has to be done like that, because that's part of the state rec- uh State Record Retention Act, you need it in three places. You need it on a server that's backed up and on the cloud and by using BSNA, we can accomplish all three.
Good plan.
And you gotta raid there somewhere, you know, so that's.
Yeah, they're local. Knew them when they, before they started that even.
Alright, so that was kind of the planning department update, I just wanted to let you know that's something that you guys don't see and it doesn't come to you, but something we're always passively doing.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? I don't see any.
Excuse me?
Any, any reports from, oh no, there's no trustee here, is there? No, planning commission, did we already made our comments?
I think we pretty much have.
Well, I just, as always, wanna thank those that work in the offices and take our phone calls personally, we don't get chased to some. Feed somewhere, we get the the luxury of having someone actually pick up our. Our office calls and reroutes everything, I know that's very costly for us, but I'm very grateful for that. And the personal touch that we have here in our offices and those that work behind the scenes, I'm very grateful for those that work behind the scenes here. And our planning department especially, but yes, everywhere.
Yeah, I was driving today and asked, asked Suri to call the Bath Planning Commission and she heard Bath and that was it, so I got to the front office and they had to transfer me back.
It's a great thing.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any objections, hearing none, we're adjourned.